Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for servicemen and women throughout the world and for those who have passed away in our community, especially Beverly Gallardi and Jack Doran, Dorlin, and all of the lives that we lost in 9/11/2001. Thank you. Well called, please.
Mr. King.
President.
Mr. Schuster.
President.
Dr. Rothschild.
Mr. McAndrew.
President.
Mr. Smurl.
Thank you. Spencer with the reading of the minutes.
Third Order 3A, City of Scranton Parks budgeted costs and timeframes received from City Council President Gerald Smurl, September 3, 2024. 3B, report prepared by Muffelhun, Washington DC for the City of Scranton titled, "Community Health and Safety Landscape Analysis."
Are there any comments on any of the third order items?
So I just have one comment on item 3B, the Muffelhun Report. So after reading the reports, my opinion that a lot of assumptions have been made in this report. It's a common criticism of this type of a study, especially when you're using this type of study to form policy and drive policy decisions, which I feel is going to be coming out of this study. Couple of questions I initially had was how well are the indicators used in this study to determine results and lack of empirical validation of indicators which in turn may cause bias and speculation as well as resulting in false or flawed assumptions. When we look at who was interviewed in this, it was select members of OECD, Parks and Rec, SPD, and only nonprofit organizations. So I don't think it took a real slice of the pie of this city. It just seems to be nonprofits and select members. So results of it are, I could have assumed what the results would be and I will wait to see how this study drives policymaking in the future. That's all.
Anyone else?
I agree. So, okay, we got the report. I wasn't happy with the last report. This one is a little less vague. The holistic approach, I don't believe is the answer. I know it's, some administration might be happy with the data per se, but we got the report. Okay, so I don't think we need to retain them. They were paid. Thank you. And I don't want to see them get another contract telling us how to operate and how the police to work. So with that said, like I said, I hope we got Muffelhun's done and we move on.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have a quick one. Let me just find it here. So Neighbor Works will be hosting the West Scranton Fall Festival. It's going to be September 28, 12:00 PM at Cloverfield. It was a great time last year. They did a fantastic job and if you get a chance to stop by, it's worth your while. And also I'd like to remind everyone of the Kelly Hopkins event. It's a reminder that the fundraiser is this Saturday at 4:00. And that is all I have.
I believe it's Sunday, Mr. McAndrew.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. I apologize.
From 4 until 9.
From 4 to 9, yes. Thank you.
Anyone else? I do have one. It's the annual commemoration of September 11th. It's presented by 911 Memorial Committee of Lackawanna County. It is at McDade Park and it will be September 11th tomorrow at 8:00 AM.
Fourth order, citizen participation.
First on this, Joan Hodouanis.
Joan Hodouanis, Scranton. With regard to 9/11 tomorrow, I wonder how many people realize that we're still suffering casualties, firefighters, police, first responders who worked on the pile after that incident and are dying of cancer now. So, you know, it's the gift that keeps on giving unfortunately. So everyone should pause sometime tomorrow morning and remember the people who gave their lives for us. I think the number of firefighters, which was originally 343 who died, is up to something like 370 now. So we paid a high price. Union contracts. I looked at the website this morning. The three that have been negotiated, firefighters, police, and the non-uniform clerical unions, they're obviously not on the city's website. Firefighters is the oldest. That was arbitrated 18 months ago. But what's interesting, there are only four unions in the city, those three plus DPW. Guess what union contract runs out on December 31st? And it's not the firefighters, it's not the police, and it's not the non-uniform clerical. It's DPW. So I don't know the status of how negotiations are going. I would hate to wake up on January 1st to see that we don't have a single union contract on the city's website. Remember that, you know, a large portion of the general fund operational budget is personnel costs. And so we should have access to that in a timely manner. 18 months is not timely, but be that as it may. The positive side of things, I'll remind everybody that the library's book sale is ongoing at the marketplace at Steamtown, second floor. Get books for $1 to $2, puzzles, DVDs, CDs, whole lot of wonderful things. Any update on the status of the city's audit?
Not as of this afternoon, nothing new.
Chugging along, are we? Okay, we still hoping for sometime in early October now?
Well, I'm still hoping for on time, but we will see.
Okey dokey, we'll see. How about the city's investigation to the records that were found in Dick's Court back in March?
As of 3:00 this afternoon, no new information. I know they were dealing with the insurance company and I don't know the status of that, if they can release it as of yet.
I'm more interested in accountability at this point. A, to make sure that we've established the correct protocols and internal controls that such a thing does not happen again. And B, you know, if someone was stupid, you know, they need to account for their stupidity. And it's a great opportunity for training. And the Mufflin Report, did you notice that not one veteran was cited as a potential criminal? But there were a couple veterans organizations which were listed among the 154 service organizations. And by the way, if you look at the appendix of the 154 organizations, 27 are for profit. So there were some in there, not many. One thing I did notice, and it was a valid point about coordination with the county because a lot of aspects of health and safety have to be, you know, coordinated with the county. So hopefully the county will pick up a copy and read it. I didn't think it was all that bad of a report, but one thing I would like to know is, you know, how this is going to impact staffing levels for the police department? Because the suggestion is that our population's going up and we're going to have to model the police department to, you know, be able to handle that. Did you see the projections they made on our demographics between minorities and our population going up? It's interesting. And I'm happy that we're going to put the bid notices online. That should save the city some money. Does that also apply to the city's boards, authorities, and commissions? If they have to put out a bid notice, same thing?
Joan, the idea is right now to get as much online as we possibly can, except for the ones that still require.
Oh, I know, federal and state. But can the authorities, boards, and commissions, if they have to put out a bid?
Yes.
Would it apply to them too?
Yes.
Okey dokey. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Bob Bolis.
Evening, Council. Bob Bolis, Scranton. 5G with University of Scranton. Don't you think we've given them enough over the years? We as taxpayers in this city have to pay taxes everywhere else and they get a free ride constantly and now we're giving them a grant for more money? You know, I brought up a long time ago and it was a touchy subject, but it's a Jesuit university and they participated in with the gay core community, allowing them to do whatever they needed to do and sponsored it. You know, if you look at religion that they're bound by, it's the rule of God and it was a violation of that. Their chapel is the only thing that should remain exempt and they should lose their exempt status because they violated the rule of God that they're under as a Jesuit university. No matter what anybody's sexual preference is or that's up to them. But this is a University of Scranton and it should be taken back and they should be paying taxes on everything in this city. We're entitled to it. 9/11 is a time to honor our heroes that died there, going into the buildings and around there, and those that are dying today from related medical issues. Four days after 9/11 happened, I took one of my trailers. It's sitting up in Drinker Street. It'll be out on the road tomorrow. And it's all detailed on the side with Bin Laden in a cave is a coward with the Statue of Liberty standing on his tail as a snake that he was, with an American tank coming and saying jihad this. It's what we lost and because of Biden and Harris today, we lost 13 of our fellow veterans in Afghanistan. And that had the nerve to say we didn't lose anybody on his watch. She's the czar of the boardroom. The borders, she could close them at any time. She doesn't have to ask permission. Yet look what she's done to this country. And her partner, Tampon Tim, as I call him, putting tampons in boys' bathrooms is a no-no. We got to draw the damn line somewhere and it's time to draw it. So these are the people that we got to deal with and we got to pay attention, especially tonight. You know, during La Fiest, it was very upsetting. I have one of my Trump trailers there parked on Spruce Street. I refuse to use the older terminology because I believe he's a coward walking away like he did. No politician in Lackawanna County ever walked away from anything. They'd die first. But the City of Scranton put a garbage truck there where porta-potties were put in by the county. So I blame the county, the City of Scranton, and the heads, or the president of La Fiest, for allowing that to take place. When those porta-potties were put in a circle to block our trailer, people coming from La Fiest, right there around the corner of Spruce and Washington, they had to come from La Fiest and just walk right into the porta-powers. They were washing and cleaning them out. People urinating there, it's on the floor. It's washed out on the street. People are going in and out and carrying that to where everybody's eating, the stench of the garbage. I mean, what is the city coming to that you're worried about politics? You won't fly to your Ukraine flag. You won't fly to your Israeli flag and honor those that are being butchered and murdered. You won't do a damn thing about our POWs, our fellow veterans that didn't come home and those that are suffering today. And now we're going to have a memorial service down at Veterans Park or former Memorial Park or Memorial Stadium. What are we coming to? There should be a high flag flying to honor them. We didn't fly a flag on the 80th anniversary of all those on D-Day. Go look at the statues, the graves, the Normandy, and these punks in the street protesting that those kids gave their lives for, 18, 19, 20, and so on, and didn't come home. And yet we sit back. What the hell are we all doing here? This is our country. That flag is our flag. It don't belong to these idiots. They don't want to be here, get out of our country. But you should be flying the POW flag out front and it should be at the stadium on Friday at 4:00. We're Americans. We defended our country and it's time our country starts taking care and respecting all those and put these punks in their place. Respect our flag for a change instead of these idiots that are out there. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all for our sign-in list. Anyone else wish to address counsel?
Tom Coyne, Manuka. Last session. There was a question on the key to Naug Park. And as I listened to it, though, I find it to, I found it to be a bit trivial. I was amused by first the response of, well, I don't know if I have the key, followed up by a second response of, well, maybe they changed the locks, followed up by a final parting shot of, it's my key, I'm not giving it back. Smurl at that point reminded me of Sméagol from Lord of the Rings. It's my precious. You can't have my precious. It's just very odd that something like that became such a thorn that it needed to be responded like that. Mr. King, in the last session, said that he agreed it was time to change the city charter. Well, you have the floor. Make that charter change. Go out here, introduce it. If you say it's time and you agreed to it last session that it's time to look at and review the charter, get the ball rolling. You agreed to it, put it forward. Or just scribble with your pen on the piece of paper and ignore the person talking. Getting on to the Mufflin Report. 115 pages, some of it was duplicated, some of it was duplicated in multiple sessions. Lots of terms, no definitions. Resources handpicked and still the results are the same according to it. Housing, education, transportation, all deficient. In your 115-page report, it says, and I summarize the 115-page report, Scranton has failed, has not participated or coordinated in any effort for the betterment of its people nor coordination of services for the betterment of its people in the community. By the effort of, the effort of local government has shown that they prefer poor and dumb as the objective. Onto tonight's 5G for the University of Scranton. I have a question because I don't think I remember seeing it. As of this point in time, I don't think this year the University of Scranton has provided a pilot at all. As a matter of fact, I don't remember this year, any pilots actually being donated to the city, except for the family who has, who had the son who puts in the $5,000 every year for the fire department's fund. I think at this point, no pilot has given money to the City of Scranton, but it seems that's okay. And maybe they don't want to donate to the City of Scranton because we're actually looking to see whether or not they're validly under a nonprofit. There's a responsibility in that pilot, but it seems, again, we don't hold charities responsible to pay their fair share. And I'm not talking about the percentage that every other person in this city pays to keep the city floating. For the university, it's not even 1%. It's a percent of a percent, but every year it's reduced. Yet we're going to give them more money and a grant now because they need it from the taxpayers' fund when they have supplied the city goose egg so that they can take their extra money and build more buildings for themselves on the threshold dwarfing this city since they're now the highest zoned area in the city. Last of all, trash and recycle, I'm going to hit. If it's going to be till December and the person deciding whether our recyclables are acceptable or not, is the person making the profit from them? Where it can go from $40 to $120 on the decision of anyone who's making the profit in that venture. I would ask Scranton residents, as of September, we've given enough. $47.63 is what is required by trash. We should at this point recycle nothing. Save the taxpayers' money, throw all your recyclables in the trash until an agreement is paid, and save the city $80 a ton for the rest of this year. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Voldenberg. Another good point that was brought up. Could we get a list from the administration of the pilots and their donations for 2024?
I'll get that, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Alan Lucas, Scranton, President of the IAFF Local 60, representing Scranton firefighters. I just wanted to touch on what Mr. McAndrew said about the event for Kelly Hopkins on Sunday. He has 4 to 9 at Montage. And I just wanted to be very brief here. It's very touching, the support we've got from the city's residents, outside the city residents. Kelly Hopkins has touched a lot of people's lives and it's really, it's a really good feeling to see that people are in support of us and in helping our brother. The Local 60 Union is the, the memberships are, the membership has been in charge of getting this whole thing up and running. And so a special thank you to those members. Timmy O'Connor is the one that's heading that up. So we hope to see everybody there. We thank you again for your support. We thank the numerous, numerous, numerous businesses that I can't even begin to name that have donated items for raffle and really hope for a good turnout and we really do appreciate everybody's support. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. Anyone else?
Hello, Council. I'm Rick Little from Scranton. I'd like to talk about democracy and elections. Everybody's thinking about taxes and what's being taxed to keep what's going, especially in the schools. And it seems to me that everybody wants to, is talking about balancing the budget in the county and the city. But the reality of it is that to balance their budget after, let's say, the last 30 years, all these nonprofits have come up, as other speakers have talked about, and nonprofits are supposed to, they have a lot of employees and keeping all these nonprofits going is, the powers-to-be are depending on the federal thing. Now, just a couple of weeks ago, I saw, I saw that, hey, Scranton Housing Authority got $153 million in the paper. It disappeared, but no one's talking about that. They're talking about law enforcement and, you know, a lot of talk about law enforcement and getting rid of the homeless with law enforcement. But this is the key thing because the powers-to-be run all these nonprofits. They own the courts through outside influences, putting people in office as attorney generals, as district attorneys. And these are the people that are running Scranton Housing Authority. They get $153 million and all of a sudden I'm homeless after 14 and a half years. Now, there has to be some critical thinking because we're talking about democracy and this, this woman, Kamala Harris, was not democratically elected by any, anything. And the debate is tonight. I'm running out of time. I only get five minutes to talk here. So I'd like to talk about children. You know, in 2021, I went to the public library, my favorite, my favorite place in this city. And I got this book. I encourage everybody to read this book. This was written by Vietnamese immigrant teenage son, this guy Andy Ngo. And I was really surprised to read this book because it's about what happened during COVID when they're burning down the police stations in Seattle and Portland and everything that went down. But this book is filled with the history, laying it out of how things work. Similarly, I went to the library and I asked them to get these books, these books by Brett Pike. And these are children's books. And they're asking me, well, do you have a child? Yeah, I do. And they find, you know, after about five months of pushing and pushing, they ordered the books and then the children's, you know, this is going back and forth between the children's library and the regular library. I had a long talk with Scott Thomas today about it and it was encouraging because I wanted to know who, they don't want these books. They don't want these books. Why? Because we're looking at the school system and, you know, they're talking about making it a state issue. It should be a state issue like marriage and abortion and so many other things, but people are ignorant of the law and how things were formed. And people are underestimating the intelligence of children. And these books explain it, explain it. Because the children are our future here and if we're pushing for public education, there's plenty of people that are homeschooling and these are key books, key books in that sort of teaching. You know, I learned at eight years old about the Treaty of Versailles watching combat with my father in 1961. And then when I went to school, I met Laswell Benedict, who directed a number of those episodes. Kids are smart and they need, they need an education and books are key to that.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Council. Mike Mancini, Scranton. Tonight I'm going to talk about arrogance. I mentioned in the past arrogance becomes your downfall. When you have studies that single out veterans like Joan Hodouanis, Bob Bolis, and others, it's wrong. Studies have caused holistic approaches. It's a waste of money. If you need a study or a consultant, you have no business working for the city. It's a waste of money. If you cannot make solid decisions based upon principles and those who If you cannot make solid decisions based upon principles and those who surround yourself with, you have no need being here. The other evening, there was a call near the University of Scranton. Young man got stabbed in the back. The University of Scranton never put out an alert. The kid was running loose. And today, I don't think they actually found him. I'd like for somebody to look into that. I have talked about so many things in the past and they've gone wayside. Not a lot of people show up here. The reason for it is they go to say something, nothing gets done. People lose hope. That's arrogance. What else is arrogance is the comments that you made last week, Mr. Smurl. I take offense to that because I've known people that have sat in that very chair before you, John Posches, Janet Evans, Judy Gattelli, many others. And for you to make a comment like that, his own becoming of that chair, and those who have elected you into this office, people look up, please look at me when I'm talking to you, at least give me that, that respect. Apparently, you can't do that either. Just like you walked away from the Washburn Street Cemetery because you trolled somebody's page and you don't like the comment that they made. So you said you were done. You know, you took your own personal approach as opposed to every single one of those flags that you went by with your zero-turn lawnmower. And I take offense to that. It's very upsetting because you and, and those who were with you did an amazing job. And it's very upsetting that we're in this position now that we're in. After my comments last week, Mr. King, you touted the city and you said that they, that we're not doing all that bad. How far away was that woman from you that was abducted at knife point and taken to New York City? Not far, right? When was the last time that happened? You touted $2 million in savings from a bond, but yet we pay 1.2 million to an attorney per year. You know, all that stuff used to be handled in-house. And yet, it's okay. It's not okay with me. We're going through a crisis right now. People are afraid to walk down the street. People are afraid to sit outside their house. Things have changed. Mr. King, in the last 20 years, you know things have changed. Everybody knows that they have. And for somebody to just sit there and say that it's okay and cater to a party of one instead of those who have elected you into this office is wrong. I mentioned the sewer authority and the rate increase of 1.9% instead of any of you looking into it and making it $63 a year. Everybody's getting whacked $220. Our paving contract with these paving companies still hasn't been addressed as far as sealing these roads. A plow truck comes over them and just blows out the, the pave cuts. Whose expense is that? Ours. You know, I met with the mayor a month ago for an hour. And she said she was working on a program. Well, she's been working on the same program for the last four years. You know, we come out with a pothole number, 800 number, 311, what have you. What about the, the list from the year prior? You know, you should resolve the list from the year prior before you put out another We could do better. And I hope each one of you take a different approach tonight because this railway system's coming in the not-so-distant future. And the decisions that each one of you make are very important to this city. I want you to take a look at those who have sat in those chairs before you. Respect those chairs and the people of the city of Scranton because they need you. Good evening.
Attorney West, Mr. Speaker?
Fifth order, five motions.
Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments?
Just a few comments. As far as the University of Scranton is concerned, that's an LSA grant. They can only apply for a local share account grant going through a municipality. So all we are is a pass-through to support that at the University of Scranton. And from what I understand, the program that they're looking to put together is a workforce development project. And my understanding is that's going to greatly benefit the residents of the city of Scranton. So I think that's probably a good thing. The money's not coming out of city accounts. We're just simply a pass-through. As far as, I, I make no apologies about the fact that I think a lot of great things are happening in this city. I, I am not blind to the fact that we have a lot of work to do. And I said that last week. There's a lot of things that need to be fixed in this city. No two ways about it. But it's, it's difficult to sit here and listen to doom and gloom week after week and try to paint the city as if it's the worst place in the world. And it's not the worst place in the world. There's a lot of great things happening in the city. And if I don't point them out, then nobody knows about them. Because everything is at that podium, not, not everything, a lot of people come up and do mention positive things that are happening in the city. So I'm just trying to give a fair and balanced view. There's no doubt that there's a lot of work and there's, we are having problems with crime. But I will tell you this. I remember growing up. I remember going to South Intermediate. I remember two students getting kidnapped hitchhiking in Manuka, and they were murdered. I remember another student getting off a bus on top of East Mountain Road, murdered. I remember multiple, a, a girl leaving North Scranton Intermediate School, got kidnapped and got murdered. So like, this isn't new, the crime in the city of Scranton. It just hasn't completely gone away. It exists. I understand that, and we need to pay attention to it. So is everything perfect? Absolutely not. Are we striving and working toward making the city a better place for all of us? Absolutely. And that's all, the only, that's the only thing I meant to point out last week, that there are some really good things happening. And I did emphasize, there's a lot of work ahead of us. Don't deny that. There is. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. King. Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I have a few. Some of the questions I asked last week, we got some answers on. During caucus tonight, it was stated that some of the West Mountain and East Mountain storm, stormwater projects are going to be moving forward. So East Mountain, we were told tonight, is ready to go. West Mountain's on a holdup due to a possible housing development up near a reservoir on the top of West Mountain above Newton Road. So one of the questions I asked last week is if we had an update on stormwater management projects and stormwater meetings scheduled for the city because some of the residents, I know especially in Kaiser Valley, were asking for that and had some correspondence with the mayor. The answer was that the city continues to work with organizing public meetings on stormwater projects, but important project elements must be confirmed so our residents are presented with reliable plans. Among its tasks, the city has been working to acquire access agreement from the owners of Newton Realty property in Kaiser Valley. And once that access is permitted to the property and it's granted, city engineers can begin testing on potential basin locations. So that was in regard to meeting with Kaiser Valley and how the stormwater projects are going. I also asked for an update on zoning questions. The zoning board came and met with us in caucus. They had some concerns. They do need to rule at zoning meetings on things in our city. And they felt there were some gray areas in the new zoning ordinance. And the answer that I got on where we're at with that is that it's pending. I also asked for an update on the homeless encampments that are being addressed, if they're being addressed by the city. And if the homeless task force committee may advise if there's been any notable increase in the number of homeless since other municipalities outside the city of Scranton have been taking action. And I got a one-word answer. That one-word answer was no. Mr. Voldenberg, could we ask if the answer no is from, is, if there is a notable increase? And if that's the case, can we also make sure that at the next homeless task force meeting, it be brought up if there is an influx in, in the number of homeless coming into the city with other municipalities taking action on that?
I'll get clarification and ask those questions.
Thank you. I asked for a status on the damaged monument at Providence Square, and the city communicated that the insurance broker on the claim will update council with any pertinent developments when they come out. And that's the, the monument that's in Providence Square in North Scranton. I asked about the HR department, if we could provide a, a list of updates on which positions need to be filled. So we're still looking for a public health coordinator, a public safety specialist, two housing inspectors for Tuesdays and Saturdays, health inspector, traffic sign maintenance, part-time maintenance, diesel mechanic, property stabilization and enhancement team manager, first assistant city solicitor, a DPW director, and the OECD director. Then another question I had was about our ARPA funds. How many of, how much of the funds have been earmarked and also allocated? And what we were told is that the ARPA funds are 100% budgeted and 98% obligated. So that number is, is looking good. There were a couple of properties that I, I had emailed Mr. Voldenberg about. Some of those properties were 1623 Jackson Street, which we talked about in caucus, 312 South 9th Street, 18504, and then 925, 927 Oxford. Couple other things. Getting back to the, the homeless task force, can we ask who runs the actual task force? Is it someone from OECD? It seems like a lot of OECD is involved with that. But who's running the actual task force?
Hey, well, we have an extensive list, but we don't have the chairman's name. So I'll find that out.
All right. Thank you. With tomorrow being 9/11, last year, city council was presented with a flag, also a certificate from the Scranton Fire Department from Zach Fanon and Ed Smeden. Council, the chambers were being painted in here, and then council offices were being repainted as well. So I was kind of just waiting on that to, to get that up in here, but I could get that in soon to get into either council chambers or council offices. Last year, they did a flight climb with some members of the police department and also EMS to commemorate 9/11. So now, onto recycling. It, it says here on our list that we do not have a, our DPW director, but it, it seems with, with this being, not being on the list, we do have a refuse coordinator and also a recycling coordinator. Do we know if that's correct, Mr. Voldenberg?
That would be one and the same.
Okay. Can we just make sure that that position is filled? Because I know it was unfilled at some point in time.
I will.
All right. Thank you. When it comes to tonnage, so this might be a question for the, the business administrator. What would be the city's average tonnage from the months of October to December based on past numbers? And do we have those past data and numbers to compare? Number one. Next, has the city BA done a cost analysis to see how much it's going to cost the taxpayer with the price increase from the recycling company? And verify if it's worth continuing the recycling program at this price?
I'll find that out.
Thank you. And then, how are we currently verifying whether our recycling is clean and not contaminated?
I'll ask that also.
Thank you. And then, do we know how many tons are not taken as recycling and charged at the new rate of $120? And how we're verifying that?
I will.
Thank you very much. That's all, Mr. Smurl.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, thank you. First, I'll start off with the responses I had received. I also had asked about the Unsheltered Task Force and when they would be meeting next, and was provided with the date of October 3rd. I'm not sure that there's a formal chairperson. The meeting that I had attended was, was run by the mayor. And the other response I had gotten about the Novembreno splash pad, I had some concerns about the pad itself and the flooring that the splash pad is, is located on deteriorating and falling apart, which has been an issue in the past. And I wanted to know if there was still a warranty in place on it. They said, no, they are not, they're, it's not still under warranty. It expired this year, and it was previously utilized to repair the amenity. And then the Parks Department will be formulating plans now that the summer season is over to remediate it before next season. So I'll be interested to see what the plans are for that and what the cost will be. And I'm hoping that whatever, you know, mistakes, whether it was the type of material or the company that we went with for this splash pad, will not be the, the same mistakes that we repeat in the future with other splash pads. I had some concerns about 429 Prescott Avenue, on that property not being secured. I didn't really receive a response specific to that. I received a response on that and 1068 Cottage Avenue, which was that they are reviewing homes previously slated for demolition, condemned homes, and homes with, that have several complaints, including these properties. So I guess that's still to be determined and receive a response if those are on a demo list or what the plans are for those specific properties, which I am concerned about because there have been many cited issues with those properties for several years. And, you know, I think it's frustrating to neighbors and residents that, you know, that's still hanging in the balance and, and not getting, and I'm not able to really provide them with, with much of a response. So that is frustrating, and I'm, I'm sorry for that. But I'll keep pushing for us to address properties like this. And hopefully, with the ideas that Councilman Smurl has brought up, we'll have some other options and avenues and legislative changes that we can make so that the city holds more power on, on properties such as this. And I wanted to bring out, and bring up a concern that was brought to a few council members. I'm not sure whether or not it's, if it's been forwarded, so I just wanted to bring attention to it tonight, that there were, there was work being done without permits at the old Jacobson's Hatts warehouse in Southside. So that's located at 5 South Webster Avenue. And the person had tried to contact a code enforcement officer, but I don't know if they didn't receive a response, but I think the unpermitted work was continuing. Was that forwarded to you?
It was. And the code enforcement manager went out to the property and verified they were only power washing at the time.
Okay.
And that permits were pulled for other internal work.
Okay. Excellent.
But I'll keep an eye on it.
Okay. Appreciate it. And I was happy to see that we do have a shredding company now that's servicing the building. That was a question I had asked about, you know, several months back when we had the issue of the recyclables being placed outside of City Hall. So I'm really happy to see that we have a company now that's going to be taking care of that for us. I am just wondering about the cost. I know that it's, that those are usually inexpensive, but I'd just be interested in knowing how much that'll be for the city.
I'll find out the cost.
Okay. Excellent. And one last thing that I just wanted to mention. So there have been several groups that, that have done like cleanups around the city and, you know, nonprofit organizations that regularly hold them. And I just think it's really fantastic work that, that people do. And one of the groups that holds regular cleanups is called Scranton Lovers. And I joined them last week in a cleanup on Main Avenue in North Scranton. And it was outside of Griffin Cemetery, which I didn't know that that was a cemetery there. And I think a lot of other people might not be as familiar with it. And it has some pretty old graves in there back when, back when there was farmland in that area. And so I got an interesting history lesson on it, which just, you know, gives you better appreciation for, for places like that. And it, it's also difficult to see when cemeteries like the Washburn Cemetery, you know, not, not taken care of. And this was just, this was on the sidewalk outside that we were cleaning up. That was really filled with, with weeds and took many bags, at least like a dozen bags to, to get all of that. But I was really happy to participate, and they wanted me to bring it up tonight because they just wanted to bring attention to their group in case other people are interested in volunteering. They make it fun, and it's just a really great way to give back to the community by being able to help clean up our city. So if anyone is interested in getting in contact with them, I, I can provide contact information. There isn't like a Facebook group or, or anything that I could give you specifically to go to. But if, if you want to know more, then feel free to get in touch with me and I'll- But if you want to know more, then feel free to get in touch with me, and I'll provide you a phone number. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Rothschild. Mr. McCandry, do you have any motions or comments?
Yeah, I got a couple. So recycling, there has been some buzz around town about recycling. And there's been a lot of questions posed to me that, you know what, I should have the answers for, and I don't. And so I'm looking for answers. I know Mr. Schuster just touched on it. My questions might be a little different, but his are important, I believe, and so were these. So let's clarify again, Mr. Volenberg, let's find out what the title is now. I mean, we had a recycling coordinator. Now it's going to be recycling slash refuse coordinator? I wasn't aware of the title change, and that'd be beneficial enough that occurred. It'd also be beneficial if there's someone in that position, whatever they're going to call it, because I remember we were without one. And then I was told maybe that whoever's covering for the DPW director was assuming their responsibilities. I don't know. But I live here long enough to know when recycling started. And, you know, it was, when it started, you know, of course, and I know that the Recycling Act of 1988 is one of the reasons why we did it. And that's fine. And, you know, of course, we worry about the environment, and that's fine, too. But my understanding, it was supposed to produce revenue. From what I'm hearing now, it doesn't. So it costs us to recycle. So we have, you know, have a great DPW team that has to pick up the recyclables. Now we're hearing it's going, they were charged 40, well, it's charged 40, maybe it's 120. Now we're going to be. So I would like to know, the questions I'd like to pose is, is there any net revenue from recycling of these recovered materials? And I'm talking about, okay, you know, cans, bottles. I know it's called mingled. I know in the past, well, recent past, that there was a problem with the co-mingling because China no longer wanted it. Who would actually do that work? And then, you know, it was going to be an issue at us. And then it kind of went away, but I don't remember the outcome totally or where we're at now. And, you know, is there a cost benefit ratio? Because there's expenses, like I said, with recycling, not just what they charge at the landfill, but we have, we have to pay salaries in trucks to pick this up. I'm concerned about the environment, but what do we, what does it actually cost us to recycle? And if, and if there's another vehicle to use, not meaning a motor vehicle, another way to do this where it's, it costs less for the residents, can we, you know, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, but I'm not sure that, you know, administration, when they come to us with asking for raises and new positions, they do comparisons with other cities like Bethlehem, Allentown. So I would like to know, we don't need a study. This information should be in-house and easily attainable. I don't want to hear, oh, we'll put Rubicon on it, and we don't need that. I just think, you know, let's not reinvent the wheel. Let's ask administration for these numbers. I mean, are we making money or not? First, that's the first question. And if we're not making money, then it's not, you know, if it was revenue neutral, I'd be okay with it. Or break even. But what I'm hearing, it probably isn't. I don't know that, so I'd like to know that. And, you know, moving forward, are we looking at ways to maximize, you know, the way we do this? And can we do it better? And that information should be in-house and easily obtained from other municipalities. And maybe you're doing it better than us. And that's fine. If they are, you know, we're not going to reinvent the wheel. So if you'd please pose them questions to administration.
I will, Mr. McCandry.
Thank you. Okay. Here's a property that, I mean, I'm here four plus years, and this property has come up multiple times. So it's 3103 McCarthy Street. It was on fire 10 years ago. All right? So, and I got some information from Mr. Volenberg, and thank you very much. But I'm getting complaints about this property again. And my understanding, this gentleman lives, who owns it, lives in Brooklyn, an LLC. But they went to the Scranton Board of Appeals, which convened in May. The owner was granted six months, so they have till November to maintain the property. They're not. Must attain, must obtain a performance bond. Not sure if they did that. But the property owner or owner's agent was giving a 30-day extension to schedule to complete an engineer's report and city inspection. Has that occurred? Because I don't think they pulled any permits. I don't think they're doing any work. I'm told no. We need to verify that. I'm also hearing multiple complaints about this property. And there's drug activity being seen there with regards to selling drugs. So please alert the police department. And my understanding is there's a squatter or squatters living there with drug-related behavior. There's dogs that are living with them. And so, like I said, let's check on the permits. Was any, were any pulled? Are they following what they're supposed to do? Which is in writing here and have until November. But meanwhile, even if they're not, there's some suspicious activity there that the residents who live near there are very concerned about. So let's have both entities take a good look at this, and please provide some feedback for me so I can provide it to the poor neighbors that are worried about this.
I'll have that for you, sir.
Thank you. So, okay, the Heritage Trail, you know, I drive by it and around it, or, you know, through the intersections, sometimes down in Bellevue. But a gentleman reached out to me, and he's like, you know, he's witnessing some very unsafe practices of drivers. And, you know, he asked for a speed bump. Is that a possibility? And I know they're not allowed in the city, but I don't know if we need better signage. I know maybe some have stop signs or not. So could you please ask administration, so what's the process? I mean, I understand, like I see, I drive, I slow down like everybody else does, but I know there's some, there's some little signage there and, you know, but could we do better at it? Because it doesn't seem to be working in this gentleman's eyes. If there's anything else that's being thought of, maybe you can ask administration so this gentleman can have some type of satisfaction with his question.
I will, and I'll also ask the county.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. I know, and they're a big part of it, but the, you know, the intersections in the city are obviously ours to worry about and maintain.
They have updated some in the past, so I'll follow up.
All right. Thank you. That is all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. McCandry. Mr. Schuster, I'm not right.
Mr. Volenberg, I had.
Oh, I do. I apologize. When you're done, I missed one.
Go ahead.
All right. So I apologize. But this is, this is something that was brought to my attention last week. So, I mean, everybody has witnessed banners being put up across Main Avenue, different parts of the city. I mean, as long as I'm alive, I've seen them. And they're great ways to advertise, especially for small churches. They can't afford any other advertising, you know, outside of word of mouth or during Mass or whatever. So it was brought to my attention that the Lebanese festival that happens every year, probably in a week from now, had a sign across Main Avenue in West Side. It's every year, like clockwork. They were denied this year with an excuse that we can't put signs up on state roads. And that concerned me. So I reached out to Mr. Smurl, and I thanked him because he got me the banner policy. There's a new policy, guys. And guess when it came out? June 21st of 2024. No one knows about it. I didn't know about it. Mr. Smurl didn't know about it. I'm grateful that he got it for me. We had to ask for it. People asking about this were just denied. So some people did a little digging, and they reached out to Harrisburg and said, you know, we, Pendott, they're like, we have no problem. We never told Scranton. Because initially, we were told to Scranton, and said, you know, they reached out to us and said, we can't do it anymore. Which I found, you know, maybe that was the case, but some people reached out to Harrisburg and Pendott, and they said, no, we have no problem with it. I mean, come on. We know it's been done forever. And they're like, no, we didn't send any directive to your city to, you know, stop doing this. So we get the policy, and I'm looking through, I'm not going to read the whole thing. I hope, Mr. Volenberg, you can put this on the website, because it's a new policy. The residents should be aware. But in a nutshell, it pretty much says, after reading it, that we still can do that. As long, now, there's a couple steps involved. Any request of that has to come before council. And that's what we kind of, that's the understanding we have. Maybe, maybe we didn't hear that exactly directly.
No, it pretty much says in there, council can change the ordinance and give permission, and then the city would assume responsibility.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, I don't know why the change in policy. Who knows? But I just wanted the folks to know out there that, you know what, you can still put that banner up, and now there's just a little more paperwork involved for whatever reasons. I don't know. But, you know, moving forward, now it's a process that has to come before us. So if you're planning an event or a yearly event, it's probably, you know, wise to reach out to us ahead of time. Give us some ample time. It's unfortunate, but the way it reads now, that's what we have to do. And, you know, we can have more discussion on this with administration for clarity and why the, you know, there's some speed bumps put up now to slow this process down. But I apologize, I jumped back in, but that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. McCandry.
All right. Frank, I have three quick things. One was 1519 Dickens Street. I know I was in contact with you and I believe Isaiah, where the sidewalk has buckled around a water basin on 1519 Dickens. I did get receipt that, they, DPW received that, but we haven't heard anything on that since. So if we could just follow up on that one.
I'll get a status, sir.
Thank you very much. We talked about fire damage properties. If we could just follow up on 1111 Rear Blair. It's been on the demo list for a while. I know, we all know what property that is. If we could follow up on that one. And then there was an update on 614 North Sumner Avenue that we got. So as per last Tuesday's council meeting, the property owner at 614 North Sumner Ave was issued a quality of life citation for $200, and it's due on 914. Andrew Sunday asked DPW to trim the property, which we did hear that DPW did trim the property. The property's not city-owned, but there is a lien placed on the property, and a demo notice was issued. So this property should be on the demo list. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. I just want an update on last week with the information that I presented during council and gave to the administration on a conservatorship about blighted properties and vacant properties. We did have our first meeting yesterday, and we are in the process of establishing a vacant property review committee. So there is a lot of legislation that has to be written on this. There are a lot of rules, and there are a lot of ordinances and stuff we may need to be changing so that we may go after the owners of these blighted properties and either take them into conservatorship or another way the city was looking at was an eminent domain. The conservatorship seems to be a little less drastic. But at that meeting, it is not public yet because it isn't, it isn't actually a committee yet. So until we've got all our rules started and we have the legislation that we need to move forward, that's when it will be established. Once it's established, it will be an open public meeting. But until then, we'll probably get together one more time just to make sure our rules are together and everybody's on the same page. There's a lot of work to this. As of right now, we have Shakira Martindale, Todd Pousley, Liza Carroll, Jacob Weinberg, Don King, Andrew Sunday, Frank Volenberg, Andrew Connors, and we have attorney Merrclaire Hayes and attorney Andrew Cattillo. So I don't know how much we're going to adjust that. I believe Dr. Rothschild is going to be part of that since she was part of, I believe, what the original Blight, I don't know if we ever got a real name for that, the Blight Task Force was. So this is maybe the way we plan to move forward with this so that we actually do have more bite. We can actually go and take a property that is being a problem in our neighborhood. So if that's the only way we can do it. But I will update everyone. I believe we're having the next meeting. We're supposed to do it the first Monday of every quarter. So that would put us into December, about December 4th, I believe. But after it's organized, we will make it a public meeting, or a public hearing. The second thing I want to speak about is, I want to thank Councilwoman McCandry and the Career Technology Center for hosting a lunch today for our first responders. Councilwoman McCandry is also an instructor at the Career Technology Center and has been doing this event for our first responders for many years. And I didn't even know about it until this year when I was invited. I just want to say, students did a wonderful job in preparing all the food and desserts. It was a great service. They provided for our first responders. I believe the part I had enjoyed the most today was when Mr. McCandry spoke to us and his students about the importance of what happened September 11th of 2001. Most of these children weren't even, or these young adults, weren't even born. So this is something that we all need to teach our children about, and I thank Mr. McCandry for teaching our students about 911. And they are lucky to have you as an instructor. That's all I have.
5B for introduction and ordinance, closing and abolishing inactive special city accounts.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C for introduction and ordinance, amending the Human Relations and Discrimination Code to change the size of the Human Relations Commission.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5D for introduction and ordinance, repealing antiquated charitable solicitation requirements.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5E for introduction and ordinance, amending the city's administrative code to permit the city to publicly advertise certain bid opportunities online as an alternative to newspaper notice.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5F for introduction, a resolution, appointment of Catherine Bogacik as a member of the Scranton Civil Service Commission to fill the unexpired term of Walter Barron, beginning immediately and expiring at the end of the mayoral term.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5G for introduction, a resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and submit a grant application on behalf of the University of Scranton to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account Monroe grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $157,500 to be used towards the Weiss Hall Workforce Development Project.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5G be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5H for introduction, a resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and submit a grant application on behalf of the West Granton Little League to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account Monroe grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $73,500 to be used towards the Field Revitalization Initiative Project.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5H be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5I for introduction, a resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and submit a grant application on behalf of Neighbor Works to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account Monroe grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $258,842 to be used towards the blighted property revitalization project.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5I be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5J for introduction, a resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and submit a grant application on behalf of Valley and Motion Trust for public land to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account Monroe grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $200,000. and Gaming Act for up to $200,000 to be used towards the Francis Willard Elementary School Green Schoolyard Project.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5J be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, file to council number 31, 2024, an ordinance approving and accepting the City of Scranton capital budget, which includes a capital reserve fund spending plan for the year 2025 pursuant to section 904 of the city's Home Rule Charter and file of council number 11 of 2024.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6A pass, reading by title.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, and so moved.
I make a motion to table item 6A.
Second.
There is a motion on the floor and a second to table item 6A. This piece of legislation is being tabled to allow for advertisement of a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, September 24th, 2024 at 5:45 PM. On the question?
On the question, that night, do we also have a, well, sorry, we also have a caucus that night, correct, with PA American Water?
Yes.
All right. There were three things here. One, City Hall expansion is something I spoke out about in the past, don't think it should be something that's, that's done. Tonight I brought up in caucus about electric vehicles, we purchased 10 electric vehicles in 2023. After the purchase of these vehicles, I think within a month, those, the make and model was discontinued. I see in this that last year we got another two vehicles in 2024. Mr. Boldenberg, can we check and see what the make and models of those vehicles are?
I will, Mr. Schuster.
All right, and then if we can get a rundown on how those vehicles are working for us, because it appears that in 2025, we're going to purchase another two electric vehicles.
I'll get that information for you.
Thank you. And then the last one was the salt shed. So last week, I think in caucus, we talked about the salt shed and the location included in the capital budget, it states that the new location would be Southside or West Scranton, although another location was discussed. Can we find out where the location for the new salt shed is proposed?
I will.
Thank you very much. And, and if there will be two salt sheds or just that one?
I'll find that out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, and so moved.
6B, reading by title, file to council number 32, 2024, an ordinance, amending filed to council number 98, 2023, an ordinance entitled, General City Operating Budget 2024, to properly account for the application of the proceeds of the general obligation bonds series of 2024, which were used to refund the city's general obligation note series of 2016 by increasing the debt proceeds account as noted by $32,470,534.25, increasing the OPEX 2016 GO note account as noted by $30,029,034.25, and adding a new expense line item account as noted titled, 2024 Series GO Bond SPA Refund in the amount of $1,143,992.50.
You've heard reading by title of item 6B, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I moved that item 6C pass, reading by title.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, and so moved.
6C, reading by title, file to council number 33, 2024, an ordinance, amending filed to council number 98, 2023, an ordinance as amended, entitled, appropriating funds for the expenses of the city government for the period commencing on the first day of January 2024 to and including December 31st, 2024, by the adoption of the General City Operating Budget for the year 2024, so as to transfer an amount not to exceed $132,000 from the Bureau of Administration contingency account number as noted to fund clerical union raises that were not identified in the 2024 operating budget.
You have heard reading by title of item 6C, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I, I moved that item 6C pass, reading by title.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, resolution number 97, 2024, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the City of Scranton to the Commonwealth Financing Authority Multimodal Transportation Fund for up to $810,000 to be used towards the City of Scranton Multimodal Webster Avenue Pedestrian Bicycle Vehicle Infrastructure Project.
What is, what is recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes, hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, resolution number 98, 2024, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Verizon Pennsylvania LLC to provide fiber optic cable and broadband services.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption, resolution number 99, 2024, amending resolution number 91 of 2024, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a memorandum of understanding with the American Rescue Plan Act Director to obligate state and local fiscal recovery funds to perform stormwater improvements at various areas of interest within the City of Scranton to amend funds.
What is recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second. On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption, resolution number 100, 2024, amending resolution 94 of 2024, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a memorandum of understanding with the American Rescue Plan Act Director to obligate state and local fiscal recovery funds to perform disaster mitigation for the Lindy Creek Tributary to amend project funding.
What is recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second. On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
7E for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption, resolution number 101, 2024, amending resolution 325 of 2023, entitled, amending resolution number 69, 2022, a resolution as amended, entitled, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the City of Scranton to take all necessary actions to implement the American Rescue Plan Act grant funds in the amount of $68,746,050 to reallocate funds from various budgeted ARPA accounts to allow for focus and funding of disaster relief efforts and stormwater mitigation, development and remediation of pool complexes within the city, and to effectuate ongoing stewardship of taxpayer dollars as amended, as amended to rebudget funds.
What is recommendation of the chairperson, Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7E.
Second. On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7E legally and lawfully adopted.
7F for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption, resolution number 102, 2024, authorizing the allocation of $2 million of funds from the balance of interest accumulated on the American Rescue Plan Act funds received by the city to the Capital Reserve Fund.
What is recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7F.
Second. On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7F legally and lawfully adopted.
7G for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, resolution number 103, 2024, amending resolution number 228 of 2023, entitled, ratifying and approving the city's acceptance and administration of grant funds from the redevelopment assistant capital program through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for up to $500,000 to be used for the NaOG multipurpose courts and pavilion project.
What is recommendation of the chairperson for community, Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7G.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7G legally and lawfully adopted.
7H for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, resolution number 104, 2024, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a memorandum of understanding between the Scranton Police Department and the Scranton School District regarding the policies and procedures for school resource officers.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7H. Second. On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7H legally and lawfully adopted.
7I for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for Adoption, resolution number 105, 2024, ratifying the amendments to resolution number 335 of 2023, entitled, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Borton Lawson Engineering, Inc., to perform City of Scranton's request for North Scranton Stormwater Engineering Services to include additional services and vendor's updated fee schedule.
What is recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7I.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7I legally and lawfully adopted.
7J for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for Adoption, resolution number 106, 2024, ratifying amendments to resolution number 336 of 2023, entitled, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Borton Lawson Engineering, Inc., to perform City of Scranton's request for Manuka and West Scranton Stormwater Engineering Services to include additional services and vendor's updated fee schedule.
What is recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7J.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7J legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, 8A, resolution number 96, 2024.
This is a resolution, is the transfer of a liquor license, a public hearing will be held in next Tuesday, September 17th, 2024, at 5:45 PM. If there is no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.